Okay, good evening. It's Tuesday, April 21st, 2020, approximately 5:00 PM. Let me read the following. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020, order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, Chapter 30A18, and the governor's March 15, 2020, order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the Town of Southwick Select Board is being conducted both at town hall and via remote participation by some or all members. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceeding as provided for in the order. Despite our best efforts, if we are not able to provide for real-time access via Zoom conference call platform, we will post a recording of the meeting on the town's website as soon as we are able. Okay, with that, I'd like to begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. So if we could all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, which stands one nation, in God, visible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, I have some sad news. I was informed by the family of Shirley Hanks of her passing. Shirley was a longtime resident of our town. She was a member of our council on aging. She was extremely active at the American Legion in the auxiliary, also happened to be the wife of former selectman Fred Hanks. Very nice lady. So if we could please have a moment of silence for Shirley Hanks. Thank you. At this time, I'm going to ask for public comments. This is an opportunity for anyone that is not on the agenda, that would like to make a statement to the Select Board, this would be their opportunity. I'd ask that you state your name and address before making your statement. Is there anyone here at this time that would like to make a comment under public comments? I see no movement. Okay, then the first thing that we have on the agenda is we're going to be interviewing three individuals who are the position of building inspector. The first candidate that we are going to be interviewing is Leslie Burnell. Is Leslie with us? Yes, she is. Okay. Leslie, as soon as Mr. Mogul turns down his radio. Leslie, first of all, welcome.
Thank you.
I know this is a little difficult, doing this remotely rather than meeting in person, but we're going to work with it. We have six questions that we're going to be asking of you. At the end of that, we'd like you to make any statement or ask any questions that you would like to ask. At this time, the board has not determined whether or not we'd be making a decision tonight or at our next meeting. So I'm going to begin with the first question as soon as I find it, and then Mr. Mogul, and then Mr. Didi. So Leslie, please share with us why you chose Southwick as a community you would like to work in.
Well, it's a smaller community than what I'm used to working in currently in Holyoke. And with that come different, a different set of dynamics and circumstances, and I felt that Southwick would be a good fit for me to widen my skills as an inspector.
Okay. Mr. Mogul, next question.
Hello, Leslie, how are you?
Hello, well, thank you. And you?
Great, thank you.
Good.
The job you are applying for is building inspector/ zoning enforcement officer. What experience do you have enforcing zoning bylaws?
Well, it's an integral part of the job that I've been doing for the last two and a half years in Holyoke. Setbacks and zoning regulations and everything that goes along with zoning is something that we have to enforce as well. So it's not anything new to me in terms of my position in Holyoke. I don't see it as being anything out of the ordinary. It's just something that I'm used to doing.
Great, thank you.
Can I have a follow-up? This is Russell Fox. Leslie, could you tell me a little bit how Holyoke works, number of inspectors, and how the hierarchy works?
Well, there is a commissioner and assistant commissioner, and there are currently two positions for local inspectors. I hold one of them. There is one vacant position, local inspector, so it's just me at the moment as a local inspector. My coworker left the city back in January. So that's the hierarchy.
Okay.
That's how it's organized.
All right, thank you. Mr. Didi?
Yes. Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm trying, I'll try to say the question correctly. I have issues sometimes. How would you deal with a contractor that consistently starts work in Southwick without first obtaining necessary permits?
Consistently?
Consistent.
That word leads me to believe that there's a pattern. And with anyone who repeatedly violates the code of the state of Massachusetts, Building Code 780 CMR, it's within my powers and it's part of my responsibility as a building official to go through the process of escalating and code enforcement with that individual. At first, I would have a discussion with him. If he repeated the act again, I would probably impose fines, tickets, that sort of thing. And if he still continued to do that, that sort of behavior, I would be forced to put a stop-work order on his job. It depends on the situation, of course, and what his particular, what the dynamics of the particular job are. It depends, in Holyoke, I've had, I've had many instances in Holyoke of just that sort of thing. And sometimes it's ignorance of the law and what, what jobs require a permit, and sometimes it's not. It's pretty obvious to me. Sometimes I can tell, you know, when it's, when it's a flagrant violation. So, you know, my response differs depending on those situations. But if a person is consistently breaking, breaking the rules and breaking the codes, then it's my responsibility to follow up and do what's necessary because of public safety is the main, the main goal here. So that's my responsibility.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Leslie, what experience have you had with e-permitting?
I haven't had any in Holyoke. We are, of course, going through the process of getting everything up online, so it's, it's an ongoing process. Unfortunately, that's my answer. I don't have any experience with e-permitting.
Follow-up technology? How do you, are you comfortable with the technology?
Absolutely, I'm here.
Okay.
On time.
There you go. Good answer. Very good answer. Mr. Mogul.
I'll go next, how's that?
Sorry about that. What experience have you had dealing with elected or appointed boards or commissions like the Planning Board, Zoning Board of Appeals, or Conservation Commission?
From the very first job I had after receiving my contractor's license, working on Cape Cod, I worked extensively with the Historical Commission and the Zoning Board as, as an applicant, of course. Working with, of course, you know, in my job and my role as a building official in Holyoke, we, we try to work closely with the Conservation Committee, the Zoning Board. We have to work very closely with the Zoning Board. We're the zoning officers for the city. So I have some experience right from the beginning, right from the get-go, with committees.
But in, follow-up, please. In Holyoke, did you have any, any dealings with any of those boards or commissions?
Not in a public forum.
Gotcha.
Such as this.
Very well, thank you.
We saved the toughest question for last. I don't know why it's still in this packet, but it is. Thank you, Carl. Have you read the employee handbook and do you have any questions?
I have read through parts of it. I'm going to be honest and say that I have not, I certainly have not read through the entire thing. I liked what, the parts that I did read. I will say that. Do I have any questions? No, I will have all kinds of questions as time goes on, I'm sure. But reading through the handbook, I liked what I saw and so, of the parts that I did read.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, Leslie, now it's your opportunity to make a statement or ask us any questions.
Well, as a statement, a general statement, I was thinking about this ever since the interview that I had first with Carl and everyone, everyone else. And one of the things that struck me was the importance that the city, the town, excuse me, puts on collaboration. I really appreciated that. It was, it's something that comes naturally to me and I, there, there have been some instances in my current position where that, that hasn't been possible. However, it's, it's something that I feel is very valuable and makes the job easier for everyone. And I believe that the constituents of a community deserve to have that kind of effectiveness within their governance. So it's, it's something that I, I find is very important as well, and I believe that I would be a good fit in the Holyoke, excuse me, the Southwick system. I appreciate your time.
All right.
Thank you.
Just to follow up really quickly, Leslie, if, if we were to give you this position, where do you see yourself, you know, as far as going further and getting any licenses, any, anything necessary to further?
Well, I, of course, I would, I would absolutely need to get the licenses that, that are required for the position, which I am assuming would be the commissioner's, the state commissioner's license. That is something that I've already, I've gotten one of the required two commissioners' testing requirements under my belt and plan on getting the others, the other one. Continuing education is something that's very important to me in this position. No one can know all the code. It's just not possible, and it also changes rapidly, constantly. So continuing education is extremely important, and I take it very seriously. So it would be something that I would find, I would hope that it would be encouraged, and from what I read in the handbook, it is.
Okay, thank you very much. Again, not to be repetitive, but we haven't decided whether or not we'd be making a decision tonight or next week, but we thank you very much.
Thank you. I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Mr. Mogul.
Hello, Mr. Fox. Mr., sorry.
Are we ready for the next candidate?
Good news and bad news.
All right.
Good news is we're ready. Bad news is the next applicant is not on the line yet.
Okay.
Yeah, that appointment is at 5:20, so they're, it's early still. Yeah, so it's still early.
So we got a couple of minutes.
Yep.
All right. So while we're waiting for him, why don't I acknowledge payables warrant number 202, dated 4/21/2020? And if I could have a motion to accept the minutes dated 4/14/2020?
So moved.
That would be Mr. Mogul.
Joe Didi, second.
All in favor. Roll call vote, Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Mogul, aye.
Joe Didi, aye.
Thank you.
Mr. Fox?
Yes, sir.
Someone whose number I don't know, notice, it's not in my phone, is saying they can't hear us. Hope, can you hear us okay? Hope is nodding her head yes.
Yes.
So I'm not sure who is, I don't want to give out the number here, but somebody who texted me, if you want to text me your name, so I know who I'm talking to. So they can't hear us.
They can hear us.
They cannot.
Make a sign, dog, and put it up. I can't text me your number.
I don't know, I don't recognize the number. It's a cell phone.
You got the last four? Yeah, I don't know. That's none of the candidates.
Nope. And it does look like somebody left, which looks like it was Leslie. And there is someone in the lobby, so I'm going to let them in. Is that okay?
Yep.
Is that, is that who I think it is?
It's, she left.
Yeah, she just joined back in.
Okay.
Mr. Kyle, have you joined our call?
It's Kyle Scott is the name, Doug.
Yep. I just want to make sure that we've got it correct and that we didn't let the wrong. I think we're okay.
Are you, are you logged in? Okay, he's logging in now, he said.
Okay.
And Doug, that person can hear now.
Okay, great. And now I know the number. I'll put it in my phone.
Yeah. With the headset. Coming to you live.
I'm calling a baseball game after this, right?
Well, you know, Doug, the Mets might be for sale.
I heard. That was the rumor.
Yes, no, maybe?
He's joining right this very minute.
Okay.
I see him.
We just got to let him, let his audio connect. There he is.
Hello, we got you.
There he is.
How are you?
Good evening. Scott, welcome.
Thank you.
All right. We're interviewing three candidates tonight. We have six questions that we're asking each of the candidates. At the end, we're going to give you an opportunity to make any statement you'd like or ask any questions you'd like at that time. The board has not determined yet whether or not we'll be making a decision tonight or next week. So with that, I'm going to begin the first question, Scott.
Okay.
Mr. Fox is, it's Mr. Scott. His first name is Kyle.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Just call me Kyle, it's fine.
I'm sorry.
It's all right.
All right, Kyle, I apologize. Please share with us why you choose, chose Southwick as a community you would like to work in.
Well, basically, Art, your, Arthur, your retiring commissioner has always spoke very highly of it. And he said out of any town he's been in, he really enjoys working there. The people are great. I drove around the town a lot. It's really got a nice mixture of, of different types of building and businesses. And after interviewing the first time, I felt really great about you guys, so I actually felt much better about it after the interview than, than I did before. I just really felt encouraged as a good, good group of people to work with. Like the administrator, the selectman I met, the secretarial staff, you know, fire chief seems like a, kind of like the type of guys I usually work with, so just was pretty enthusiastic about it.
Next question, Mr. Mogul.
I want to follow up on the first one.
Okay.
Yeah.
Are you sure about the selectman you met? He was okay?
Yeah.
Be careful how you answer that.
Very, very professional, sir. I like the question. They actually pertain to what the job is. It wasn't, you know, it wasn't some nonsense stuff, so.
Well, that's what a preliminary interview process does.
Yeah, definitely. And that may, actually made me feel comfortable with all of you on that, were interviewing me that day, and then kind of gives you some insight into who you're dealing with.
The job you are applying for is for building inspector, zoning enforcement officer. What experience do you have enforcing zoning bylaws?
Well, I think I gave you one, one or two of the letters from different towns I've worked in. And I worked in Northampton for quite a few years, and I was their code enforcement officer for the city of Northampton. So I've handled a wide variety of issues from encroachments, hoarding, non-complying uses, people building without permits, you name it, I've hit it. So I did all my own secretarial, all my own enforcement. I handled all the court cases for the building department of the city of Northampton for six years and was in and out of court on different cases. And when I did too, I would consult the town attorney, but 90% of the time, I did it myself, and I, actually, all of them were too, too successful resolved, so. I hope that answers the question.
Thank you.
Mr. Didi?
All right, folks. How would you deal with a contractor that consistently starts work in Southwick without first obtaining necessary permits?
Well, I've had quite a bit of that over the years. I actually got a repeat offender I'm dealing with now. Basically, sir, you put a stop-work order on him. I followed up and documented it. It's not that common to have one that pushes it to that extreme, but just document the fellow's license, how many offenses he's had, put an orange sign on it, tell him what he did wrong, why does he keep doing this type of behavior? You can file a complaint with Boston. My experience, having done that previously, you'll, you'll waste a lot of town resources taking him to a hearing in Boston. They'll schedule a hearing, it's his license. And in the end, the most I've ever seen is a $250 fine. So what I do is I just would keep doubling, or whatever your, your town allows, double or triple the permit fee, and keep hitting him in his wallet and, you know, doing the best to get through to him. The Boston thing would be a last resort due to the fact I, I think largely it's just really a waste of time.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Kyle, what experience have you had with e-permitting?
I've been involved in it to some degree. The town I work in currently doesn't have it. Northampton was, was in the process of it, and they did have different software for that. You know, I have different experience with all different types of software for, for buildings, so I'm sure it's nothing that wouldn't be, it's not an insurmountable challenge to learn your system.
Okay. So just a quick follow-up, technology, no problem?
No, sir. I'm good with it. I did a lot of, actually, on the side, I was doing CAD drawings and things like that even. I don't do that anymore. It's just too, too time-consuming, even though I do enjoy it, but I'm, I'm pretty good with that, all of that technology.
Thank you.
I'm happy I called in and it worked, so.
That's what Mr. Mogul was going to say next.
That actually was a test, right? We're all actually really having a regular meeting, just a technology test to get everybody to dial in. So Kyle, what experience have you had dealing with elected or appointed boards or commissions like the Planning Board, Zoning Board of Appeals, or Conservation Commission?
In, in Northampton, I would often do plan review with, if the commissioner was out, you then met with the assistant planner or planner. Most communities, I do attend planning board meetings, ZBA meetings, and, you know, work, work with, trying to get the projects through in town, making it easy for the applicant to get to where he wants to go, and, you know, try to achieve a good result. I think one of the letters in my file was actually from the president of the five colleges where they built a textbook annex. And I actually sat in on every conservation meeting, every planning meeting, and worked that through the whole process with the different boards. So I'm very much used to that. And I actually sat in on every conservation meeting, every planning meeting, and worked that through the whole process with the different boards. So I'm very much used to that. It's something actually I enjoy. Helps me to learn the job better and learn the regulations of the community as well.
I have a follow-up to that. Your application, I think you live in Hadley?
I live in the town of Hatfield.
Hatfield, I'm sorry. So in the past, and I'm not throwing anyone under the bus too much, a lot of times our past inspectors, or just in general, may not make it to some of our evening meetings for whatever reason. And like you just said, some of those, and I'm not asking you to go to meetings, but there are times, a thing shows up where, you know, they look back at our building inspector for reference or for an answer, especially maybe Conservation or CBA. And do you feel that would be something you would attend? Or would be the standard, I live in Hatfield, I leave at 5:00.
No. Just for one reason, you can now watch most of them on YouTube within the day after. So if you miss something, you can certainly, which is something I often do, is play catch-up with it. But anything that I feel has major impact, I try to be there. And a little thing I do is Google Calendar on the phone. So, you know, I try not to forget, stay on top of things. But there's really not any excuse today with technology to be in the dark on any project, I wouldn't think.
Wasn't so much the dark, it was just the lack of the inspector maybe going to that one meeting out of six months that he should have went to, that's all.
No, I like to attend as many as I can. And if, like I say, if you can, I follow up and watch them the next day.
Yeah, we're not that tech savvy yet. This is the first time we use Zoom, so. I said overthink this, but we are going in that direction.
Yeah, sure.
We do record them.
Yeah, I've actually watched some of them, so.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Yep.
Well, Mr. Dede, you have the final question.
Oh, you should let me look. Oh, the world famous question. Have you read the employee handbook? Do you have any questions?
No, sir. I read it, but I don't have any questions. It seems pretty straightforward.
Yeah, I've never read it, so that's good.
Yeah.
All right, Kyle, you can tell we keep this kind of relaxed in our interview process.
Yes.
But now is your opportunity to make any statement you'd like to the board or ask any questions.
I really have no questions. You know, if you choose to select me as a candidate, I'll do my best to do an excellent job for you. And if you ever have feedback where you hear the otherwise, you just let me know and it would be corrected. But I'll do my utmost best to do a good job for you and live up to our.
Thank you.
Those are big shoes to fill.
Those are really big shoes. That's a good point.
Well, we thank you very much, and like, not to be repetitive, but I don't know if we're making a decision tonight or next week, but thank you very much.
All right, so you'll notify me as soon as you do?
Absolutely.
Yep.
All right, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Carl, when's the next candidate scheduled?
One minute.
5:35.
Any sign of him?
Not from where I sit.
Okay, and the announcer's booth.
That's right.
I think you play that Meatloaf song with the baseball game.
Could do a Mean John Sterling impersonation.
All right.
Susan, that's just baseball.
My Doug's monitoring that. I will announce some of our dates. We have a special election to fill the state senator position of Don Humison. That is gonna be May 19th, Tuesday, May 19th. Our local elections will be June 9th, that again is a Tuesday. And the special town, annual town meeting will take place on June 16th. We pushed everything back one month.
Russell, have you heard anything about, depending on what's going on in the state, if that election date is firm?
From what I'm told, it's still a firm date.
Thank you.
I think it's possible, depending on what Governor Baker decides. I think most people have already heard that schools are gonna be closed remainder of the year. So I don't know what is going to, the governor's going to suggest. Possibly if he suggests even longer, maybe that election will be changed by the Senate. I don't know.
Think we're gonna have a graduation?
I think we're gonna probably ask our CAO to reach out to the school. That that is something that the public would like to know. There are people that don't have kids in school anymore, but it's still good for our community to know these kind of things.
Yeah, you have the children.
I will confer with them tomorrow.
Okay.
Do you want me to go over either items while we're waiting, Doug?
Well, I was looking for Doug to give me a nod one way or another.
I only see one number in here that I don't recognize, and I hope I didn't mess up and let someone in early. But I don't believe that Mr. Sullivan is on the line yet, correct? Oh, good. So no, he's not here yet.
All right, then we will go into old business. The first thing is remote participation policy development. I think obviously we said that we would continue working on that. Carl, what's the update on Wi-Fi in the town building and all that good stuff going on?
Wiring is underway. They anticipate the wiring being finished within the next several days. And the devices that are going to be hooked into the wiring are showing up this week. I think we're gonna see substantial completion by the end of next week.
Excellent. All right, so we're gonna keep that on hold. And hopefully, that'll be something we'll be working on over the summer when we can all get together again. The next thing is the Mass DOT Conga Monroche status closeout. Mr. Steinhardt, myself, Town Council, and DPW Director Randy Brown had a conference call with Mass DOT concerning the bill that we received for overage in the amount of approximately $300,000, which was a big surprise to the town of Southwick. I think we had a very frank discussion with Mass DOT. Town Council made some very good points. I think obviously Mr. Steinhardt and Mr. Brown made very good points. I'd like to say Mass DOT agreed with all our points. They did not. But we are in a position now that we will be meeting again in two weeks. The state is gonna be looking at certain things. Town Council is gonna be reviewing certain documents. And we're gonna see where this leads. But obviously, this is not a good situation. I think that we can, most people can agree that this project was a problem child from the very beginning. I have serious doubts that the low bidder was a responsible low bidder. That's my opinion. It's not the state's opinion. But we will continue to talk with them. And hopefully, with those discussions, we'll be able to resolve this short of taking legal action. Mr. Steinhardt, do you have any other comments?
No, I think that about summarizes the totality of that short meeting.
Yes, sure, that is correct. Next thing I have under old business is this transfer station concerning brush and white goods that Mr. Dede's been working on. Joe, do you wanna give us an update on that?
Yeah, if any papers out there listening, don't print anything tomorrow, please. Just give me one more day. It looks like we're gonna start Monday with TJ Barkmulch accepting the brush. We're gonna do that right now for two weeks and watch the load and see how heavy it is. It calms down. We're gonna go switch over to our DPW again. And they're gonna alternate days that they'll just have two piles, they're gonna make it work. As far as the white goods go, or, now, listen, people that listen out there after the tape. If I'm gonna throw you under the bus, you're gonna know it, okay? Speed bumps are one thing, hitting you with the bus is another. So the computer system at our clerk's office doesn't have our white goods on there exactly the way it should be. So she's gonna go in and clean things up. So you'll be able to pull a permit for all of our white goods, as you call them, Russ, or metal, whatever that is. So she'll have that done in a couple of days. And we'll just watch and see what we do with opening of Town Hall as to when we start that process again. But we should be ready to go here in another week or so. Make any sense?
Right, very good. TJ Barkmulch, when we finally go in that direction, they're gonna make sure that all brush coming in is from Southwick residents.
Yeah, they're gonna look for a license. They're gonna take the plate number down. We'll have all the information. No stumps. It's the same guidelines as us, three-foot, you know, brush. They'll have a place for them to dump it. And we got it all figured out. I just need to confirm with them tomorrow that we're all set starting for Monday.
Joe, thank you very much. I know you put a lot of hard work into this.
Yep. Good times.
Mr. Mogul, any comments?
No, I just wanna thank Joe and both of you guys for all you're doing out there right now. And just for people that do listen to this, we might wanna tell people where TJ Barkmulch is.
Yeah, I think the press will do a story. I just don't need it in the paper tomorrow because I gotta get back with TJ and get it all going. And then the press can probably sit down with Randy and do something for the paper.
I might have muted Carl.
Carl?
Where is Carl?
He's there, but he's muted. Mr. Steinhardt.
When did I know about this years ago? Okay.
Yes.
Mr. Steinhardt.
Saunders is reaching out and communicating with the other candidate right now. She had talked to him earlier today. So let's let her work that out as we continue on with the agenda.
All right, you are on the agenda right now, Mr. Steinhardt. An update on the Southwick Fire Department Masonry Roof Project bid results.
Yes, let's see, Mr. Chairman, the last week when we had met, we had talked about how the trades came in. And last Thursday, the GC bids came in. And we, those, let's see, we had seven bids ranging from, let's see, $929,500 up to $1,545,601. So our design firm is evaluating them now to make recommendations. And of course, you know, when this went out to bid, the estimate was about a million. So we're gonna have to see what that comes back with in terms of this base bid. There were no alternates in it. So along with a base bid of whoever gets recommended to have the bid awarded, attention upon town meeting. It'll be an article brought to the town meeting floor June, because the bids will be long enough to still be good by then. Then you'd have to also factor in a contingency amount and a clerk of the works amount. So, and, you know, so that's what you just need to be aware of. And it's got the, all the stuff in it, so, okay?
Thank you.
Thanks.
And why have you? Any other old business, Mr. Steinhardt?
Yeah, hold on. Cindy said he's trying to get on. Yep. Yeah, put him through your phone if you have to.
Oh, cell phone, no.
Yeah, he can call in if he has to, okay? You've got all the detail. Now Cindy's gonna find a different pathway for him to come into the meeting.
Good.
Does he not have the dial-in number in case he just wants to use a regular old telephone?
Well, that's what she's got that too for him.
Okay.
All right, while we're waiting for that, Carl, any other old business?
Let's see. In terms of the COVID-19 discussion and action items, I spoke with both chiefs today, and they're continuing to provide services while protecting their staff. The police, excuse me, the Fire Chief is pursuing the second ambulance outfit for the paramedic level, as you met with him a few weeks ago. I talked about doing a combination of existing funds and finishing the phase in. So that's gonna be off of a short-term lease approach. So, hold on. Selectmen's Office. Hey, Bob. I'm gonna put you on speaker here. Did you get the call-in information? It's the same information we all have?
The call-in information, I don't have in front of me now.
Yep, okay, well, let's see if everybody can hear you. Can everybody hear, Bob?
You probably have to put him on speaker there, bub.
Yep. Okay, Bob, can you hear everybody?
Yes, I can hear you.
Can you hear Bob?
Yes, we can.
Okay, they can hear you.
Okay.
All right, welcome, Bob. This is Russ Fox. And we have three candidates that we're interviewing tonight. You were the final candidate. We have six questions that we're gonna be asking you. At the end of that, you would have an opportunity to make any statement or ask any questions you would like. Is that clear, Bob?
Yes, it is. Thank you.
Okay, all right. Then I'm gonna begin. Please share with us why you chose Southwick as a community you would like to work in.
Let me see. It's, I like Southwick. I'm very familiar with Southwick. I've been in Granville for 48 years. And I've done a lot of building in Southwick. I've done a lot of business in Southwick. It's just a great town.
Just a quick follow-up. You're currently our backup inspector when Art's out?
Hold on, something's getting interference here. I'm getting a lot of static, Rob.
Yeah, no, I understand. I talk to people up in Granville all the time, and technology, they have problems up there.
Thanks, it's the cell phone. Okay, what was the question again?
Just for clarification, you're backing up Art when he's on vacation or out sick?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Going down there for about six or seven years.
Okay.
That's why I kinda know Southwick, you know, I know a lot of people down here. I kinda take an interest in what's going on down here. I kinda follow your politics.
Mr. Mogul, next question.
The job you are applying for is for Building Inspector, Zoning Enforcement Officer. What experience do you have enforcing zoning bylaws?
22 years up in Granville. Can you hear me?
We can, thank you very much.
Oh, okay. Oh, no, let me finish it. 22 years up in Granville. You know, the direction of the Select Board and the town administrator, any complaints that come in, they get passed on to me. I usually try and make a connection or a contact within 24 hours of receiving the complaint. Try to make a site visit. A lot of times I can't get on the property, or I don't wanna get on the property unless I have permission. Anyways, I look into it. I look in to see if there's a violation, find out what the problem is. And, you know, what I like to do is I try and... find out what the problem is, and, you know, what, what I'd like to do is, I try and solve it without getting into a, deal with either the Board of Appeals or getting into a legal situation where we have to, you know, get the town attorneys involved. So, and I've, over the years, you know, I've had, we've had, we've had, oh, I'm gonna say, I've had ten good ones that, that went to court, you know, we just couldn't do anything with them, you know, we were right and they were wrong. But, you know, most of the time, you just speak with the people, speak with the, the offending violator, you can try and solve this thing, you know, with a meeting of the minds, you know, and, and try to avoid a lot of litigation and...
Yep, we got you, thank you very much.
Oh, oh, okay.
Mr. Didi, next question.
Okay, how would you deal with a contractor that consistently starts work in Southwick without first obtaining the necessary permits?
Well, first of all, you give them a violation notice, you give them a fine, and then the BBRS has a program for this, and, you know, we, we, we take it to Boston, and we go after his license, and the BBRS will, will deal with it.
Do you find yourself going to Boston often?
No, no, only, only two times, and it's really, I'll be honest with you, it's really difficult to go to Boston, you know, as you know, just getting in and out of there, and getting to the, to the office. So, I think now that, you know, technology has changed, and I think that it's gonna be a lot more Zoom meetings and whatnot, so...
Okay, thank you.
That, that, that's the only thing you can do, you know, you, you, you stop the job, you give them a cease and desist, you, you, you tell them, I have a, a program for this, I give them a cease and desist, I tell them what his options are, and if it's somebody that's consistently doing it, it definitely would, it would be reported to, to BBRS.
Okay, thank you.
Bob, what experience have you had with e-permitting?
None. No, just, just, I, you know, a couple times I came in there with Art, and you know, I, I, I'd be honest with you, I, I don't have any at all. I, I kind of understand how the program works, but I just haven't interacted on a computer with it yet, you know?
Okay.
I don't think we're ever gonna get it up here, so...
Yeah. Any hesitancy doing that in Southwick?
Could you repeat, I, I couldn't hear you, please?
Any problem with doing that with Southwick, learning it and implementing?
Oh, no, no, I, I'd be looking forward to doing that. It's, it's the latest technology, it, I think it, it just makes the building department's job, the building inspector's job, and the staff's job a lot easier. And it's just, it's, it's the way of the future, it's, it's coming, so, you know, and I, I would be excited to, to learn it.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Mogul?
I'll, I'll ask the follow-up that you asked on previous, so, Bob, how are you with technology in general? Are you comfortable with it?
Yeah, I'm pretty comfortable, yeah. Yeah, I, I've been, and I've been to Zoom meetings before, you know, it was, this weekend, I had a, a two-and-a-half-hour Zoom meeting this weekend, and I, I just can't understand why I couldn't get on the line with, with you folks, and we couldn't get the link to work, but...
What experience have you had dealing with elected or appointed boards or commissions, like the Planning Board, Zoning Board of Appeals, or Conservation Commission?
All the time. I'm always, we don't have the electronic, you know, system up here, so, when a permit comes in, I usually, I, the first people I talk to are the, the Planning Board, and then I go to the Conservation Commission if I think it's a problem. And I, I've been trying to change things up here, I've been trying to get, get a, a sign-off sheet that, that we can all do electronically to deal with this stuff. But, I, I deal with Conservation Commission not that often, you know, it's just, if, if there's, there's gonna be a problem, then, you know, we get together, and, and I've been dealing with them for 22 years. Board of Appeals, I, you know, it seems like recently I've been sending a lot of people to the Board of Appeals because, I don't know, it must be the war here, everybody, everybody, everybody violating something, so, you know, so, you know, I, I'm on a, I'm on a, you know, a name for a personal basis with them, I just get on the phone, call them, you know, we'll meet at the town hall, or we'll discuss it on the phone with, with all three, all three, uh, I don't know what else to tell you. I, I know that, that electronic, electronic permit would be a godsend up here.
Just a quick follow-up, should, most of our meetings happen at night, and in the past, some of our past building inspectors from years gone by would hesitate to show up for a meeting if they were asked to. Do you have a problem, should, and it doesn't happen often, but there's been cases where they would really love to have the building inspector at a planning board meeting, or a CBA, or conservation, and like I said, it's not often. Would you have issues coming down the mountain for that meeting?
No, no, not at all, you know, not at all, and I, I expected that. You, you seem to have a lot more going on down there than we have up here, wouldn't be a problem at all, so...
Thank you.
Okay, Joe, you have the last question?
Well, I gotta look at it, it's a hard one every time. Have you read the employee handbook, and do you have any questions?
Oh, let me see. The COVID prob... How, you, you guys have, have a, a long-term plan, I just, I'm not trying to pin you down, I'm just, a long-term plan on...
On the COVID?
On the list, yeah, on the COVID-19 situation.
Yeah, the, the building inspector's been having...
He's here.
There he is.
There he is.
There he is, now we can see you.
Yep, there I am.
Okay. The building inspector, I believe, has instituted a program that Melissa could speak to, this is Bridges who Doug has muted, but I think it has to do with making sure that pitches are taken inside, and that inspectors are, are not going in without the necessary protections, or not going in at all. Doug, if you want to unmute Melissa, we could clarify that for...
Pretty sure she done muted herself, but I think I can unmute her anyway.
She's unmuted.
Unmuted, okay.
Hello, Melissa.
Hello.
Melissa...
Oh, there she is.
Hi, Melissa.
Melissa, a question he wants to ask about how the inspections are being done to protect the inspectors out in the field from the COVID-19 issues, and I know Art instituted some measures for our, our inspectors. Could you just mention them?
Oh, for sure, so, it's case-by-case basis, anything that's new construction, the inspectors are going to, if it's not, it depends on what it is, yeah, depending on what, what kind of inspection, but we are accepting pictures for most cases.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I'm doing up here, too. Okay, 'cause I know a couple weeks ago, I went out there, and I was, I was, I don't know if you had a, a program in, in place, when I went over to Depot Street. Can she hear me? I don't, can you still hear me?
We can hear.
Oh, okay, and I think I, I talked to you at the time, and I said I had a mask, I, I put the mask on, and I was kinda worried about it, because I did go in, but, you know, I, I, there was somebody there, a contractor was there, I kept my, my social distance, got the heck out of there, but, no, that's fine, I, that's, that's the way it should be handled with the photographs, and there's a way to, to, you know, handle this stuff and get it done properly, so... Thanks, Melissa.
You're welcome.
All right, Bob, that's the end of our questions, so, now we're gonna give you an opportunity to make any statement you'd like to the board, or ask any questions.
Okay, I don't know, I, I, I really like Southwick, okay? As I said before, I don't wanna be redundant, but, you know, it, it's a great, it's a great town, you know, I've been down in the building department on and off for, you know, three, three or four years now, and, you know, I got to spend some time down there, and it, it seems like a wonderful place to work, and Melissa's a, a, a great asset to the, to the town, so, I don't know if she can still hear me, but...
She can hear you.
Oh, okay. Yeah, she does a pretty good job. Yeah, oh, she does, she's, she's wonderful.
Yeah. Do you have any other thoughts or questions, Bob?
Oh, I don't know, let me see. I, I'd like to say, I, I think I could be an asset to the town, you know, I don't know how well I do on interviews, but I think I could be an asset to the town, I, 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 I know, I, I know how to get around the code, if, if I can't answer a question, you know, right on the spot, I'll find you the answer, you know, you, you won't get any BS answer, you'll get, you'll get the right answer, and that's always the way I've, I've tried to handle it. I think, I, I'd like to think that I can, I can speak to anybody, I can get along with anybody, I can usually diffuse a situation, and there's been a few of them up here, and I think just in the, the general area of operating with zoning bylaws and with the building codes, I, I can usually come up with a solution that keeps people happy, I guess.
Good. Any questions, Abus?
No, I guess, the only question they had really at this time was the questions about how they're handling the, the COVID situation, and I, now, that's satisfactory.
Okay. So, like I said before, Bob, we don't know whether we're gonna make a decision tonight or next week, but we thank you very much for being a candidate.
Okay, I thank you for the opportunity to be interviewed tonight, I, I really appreciate it. Stay safe.
Thank you, Bob, you too.
Yeah, okay, good night.
Good night.
Thank you.
All right, and that concludes our interview process, so we're gonna go back to the agenda.
Yeah, I, I was updating you on the COVID-19 issues.
Correct, go ahead.
So, let's see, we had just talked about how the fire chief was able to use some of his gift account money from that gift that came in from Nancy Brown and, and her family, so, he's looking at being able to go and secure that portion of the $55,000 that's in the budget, so that it'll be much lower when we go to reconcile the budget, where we could do a three-year lease that you okayed, and, and we might be able to just go ahead and, you know, not have to lease it, but just buy whatever the balance is, and then pay off the lease, because there's no prepayment penalty.
Okay.
Year lease, and, because that's the equipment that you committed to, to do as part of the ALS transition, and the second ambulance outfit.
All right, anything else, Mr. Steinhardt?
Yeah, speaking to your issues today, of course, the governor did announce that schools would stay closed until the end of June, and he would be encouraging school districts to promote Sue remote learning, which of course is gonna be something in the, something the school system's gonna be undertaking through the Superintendent's Office. Lastly, he did not give any indication on whether or not he would be changing the non-essential reporting requirements for different private sector and public sector buildings, and their staffs that are non-essential. So, that's still a pending issue that we hope that we get some guidance on within the next week.
All right. Mr. Mogul, any old business?
Uh, no, sir.
Mr. Didi, any old business?
Not that I can remember.
All right, we're moving on to new business. First thing I have is discussion and decision on the building inspector selection. Any thoughts by anyone?
If, I haven't really read everything, if you don't mind giving me another week, I'd appreciate it, but if you guys can't, you can't, I understand.
Mr. Mogul, any problems, holding us off for a week?
I do not, no, sir.
Okay, then we will take action on this at our next meeting.
Thank you.
Uh, the next thing, I'd like to set up a fiscal 21 budget work session with the CAO and our town accountant, and any other individual that we deem necessary to be at that meeting for the Select Board to go over the entire budget, proposed budget.
Right, the Finance Committee is doing its work session next Monday evening.
Okay. I'm gonna suggest, because of the situation, and you guys tell me whether it works or not, that we do it during the daytime, so that it'll be easier for the town accountant and assistant town accountant and, and their staff to join us. I'm throwing it out there. Mr. Mogul?
I will do my level best, just if...
If we did do it during the day, what would be the most ideal for you, Mr. Mogul? Because you seem to be on the tougher schedule than...
Probably in the middle of the afternoon on a Tuesday or Wednesday, or Thursday.
Okay. Mr. Didi?
Oh, I'm self-employed, we're wide open, we got more time.
I, I, I concur with you, Mr. Didi, so, I'm gonna suggest the afternoon of Wednesday the 22nd.
That's tomorrow.
Oh, I'm sorry, Wednesday the 29th.
That would be fine.
Mr. Didi, Wednesday the 29th, and we'll give, we'll do a backup of the Thursday the 30th, is that all right?
Yep.
And Mr. Steinhardt will give us the green light on which day works best for him.
And Doug, your preference is 2:30, Doug, or 3:00, or what's your preference?
Anytime in the afternoon on those days, whatever.
2:30 and the 29th of the 30th, okay.
All right, and Carl, you're gonna let us know tomorrow?
First, first thing in the morning, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Have we heard anything from the state? I saw Springfield had some rumblings that they feel their funding is not gonna be where it was last year.
Well, I, I, I mean, obviously, we saw the same article where it could be, what, 14% on the, on the local aid numbers, so, our number is, is about $1,400,000 is what our total local aid is. So, we'd have to look and see what that would, I think their number was five and a half million, ours could be, you know, 190 to 210 or something along those lines, Joe, proportionally.
That's a lot, still a lot.
So, you know, obviously, with some of the conservative approaches that you're already taking with the general fund freeze, on any non-essential positions, we're gonna stop to accrue any funds we need to now to close the year out, still well-balanced, and that'll go toward accruing into next year's free cash, but you already have the last free cash already accrued, so, you know, we gotta look at the revenue and expenditure model, but the important thing is, we've, we've gotta go through your work session and get down to where you want to go with your priorities.
Okay, thank you.
The number I heard was 14% on the top line, it wasn't local aid yet, that they, they haven't even figured that math yet, it was state receipts is 14%, is what they're predicting so far.
Right, and, and so, when I saw that article in that other community that Joe just mentioned, you know, in terms of what that related to for them, we, we just purportedly went and looked... in terms of what that related to for them, we, we just purportedly went and looked at it for us because we're not, um, you know, we don't get Chapter 70 funds. That goes to the, the schools directly.
This is starting to remind me of when Prop 2.5 was passed. I was on the finance committee at the time. And, uh, it necessitated making some very, very hard decisions.
Russ, weren't you the youngest member of the Board of Selectmen then? Or finance?
Yes, uh, yeah, youngest member of the finance committee. Then the following year I became the youngest member of the Board of Selectmen.
And now you're the oldest member of the Board of Selectmen.
And had to implement, uh, those things of, uh, necessary for Proposition 2.5. And I think that's what we're gonna be, we're gonna be making some tough decisions. Uh, but I think that, uh, the citizens of Southwick are gonna understand it. I think our, our departments and our employees are gonna understand it also. We're, we're going into uncharted, uh, territory now, so... Mr. Steinhardt, any other new business?
Uh, yes, actually, the, um, you had a work session several weeks ago. And you met with the representatives from police and fire, conservation and open space relating to the signage issue that was a recommendation from the open space plan?
Correct.
So what came out of that was you're asking, uh, Chris and Dennis to do research about an application to be filed to the CPC for, um, signage to be placed at all the different various municipally-owned or controlled open space properties. So at this point in time, uh, Dennis and Chris have come forward with an application for 15,000. It's consistent, um, with what we talked about that evening. The webpage design, uh, issue that Chris wanted to also move on, that's already underway with Cottography. And then there'll be other funds also put into the admin budget that will help with the other aspects in terms of pamphlets and signage, well, you know, kiosks and other things, so... The board needs to authorize the chair to sign the application to the CPC for that signage for municipal properties in the, in the dollar amount of 15,000.
Need a motion?
Uh, Doug Moguln will make that motion.
Joe Didi, second?
Roll call vote. Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Moguln, aye.
Joe Didi, aye.
Thank you, and passage unanimous. Any other new business, Mr. Steinhardt?
No, sir.
Mr. Moguln, new business?
I would like to note, I was going through my calendar and I'll note that tomorrow is, um, Administrative Professional Day. And I was thinking out loud that maybe we should, um, consider some kind of recognition for some of the department heads and, and whatnot, as well as, uh, some of the administrative professionals that have been doing some superhuman, uh, work during this and putting in some extra hours and extra work with everything that's going on uh, with this whole COVID-19 situation. Just got me thinking, so I wanted to give that to the board as food for thought.
Mr. Didi?
If you want, Doug, I could follow up with you and we could see what options we could undertake and just deal with that, uh, by you and I addressing it.
Okay.
Mr. Didi, any problems?
Never a problem here.
Okay, all right. Doug, thank you for working on that with Mr. Steinhardt.
No problem.
Any other new business, Mr. Moguln?
No, sir.
Mr. Didi, new business?
Nah.
Okay, I will go now also. Uh, with that, I need a motion to adjourn. Our next meeting will be next Tuesday, the 28th. At 6:00 PM? Carl?
Yes.
6:00 PM is good?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right-
I'll give you that motion then.
Okay.
Second.
Uh, motion made by Mr. Moguln, second by Mr. Didi, all in favor. Roll call vote. Russ Fox, aye.
Doug Moguln, aye.
Joe Didi, aye.
All right, unanimous. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, everybody, for attending.